Welcome to the January regular meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education. The mission statement for the district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it was posted on the Lake Mills Area School District website at the Lake Mills Post Office and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
Okay, so then we'd call the meeting to order. I would ask you to join, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I could just about make out the flag from where I was standing here in my house. May we have a roll call for attendance, please?
John Delaney.
Amy Litcher.
Here.
Andrew Palmer.
Here.
David Radel.
Here.
Robert Tumperio.
Here. The next is the agenda. Are there any revisions to the agenda? And this would be the time if any board member would like to have a particular item from the consent agenda treated separately, this would be the time to identify that. Hearing none, I move, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moving the seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
John Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Andrew Palmer.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Robert Tumperio.
Aye. The motion carries. We're ready to go. And the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. And this is an opportunity for the public to provide input pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 118.38-PRIN1B regarding submission of a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive the required instructional hours for students pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 121.02-PRIN1-PRINF and administrative rules for the 2021 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Dr. Olson, can you give us a brief update on what the purpose, what we're looking to waive? And then see if we have anyone who wishes to offer comments?
Yes, this was something that was not new to this year. The DPI allowed us, allowed school districts across the state of Wisconsin to waive their hours of instruction due to the pandemic. This year, they've actually opened up their flexibility application. And there were a number, about five pages of state statutes that school districts could consider a waiver from, anywhere from educator effectiveness to the length of a school day, just a whole host of things. The one thing with us being in person that we were not allowed to waive were any of our school safety drills. So we still conduct those monthly. However, due to the pandemic and the planning that goes along with that, we are asking for state flexibility in our hours of instruction. And primarily, and you wouldn't waive one school over another, but primarily the hours of instruction that are required at the high school level probably will be extremely tight. And I'm assuming that with starting school four days later with instruction and then also changing our schedule to the half days on Fridays and any pending upcoming snow days, that we would not meet those hours of instruction. If we did not ask for that waiver, we would have to complete that, which would mean going, you know, later into June, just like you would in the other normal school year when you have an extraordinary amount of snow days. So this is an opportunity for the public to provide their input on whether they think it's a good idea or if they don't think we should ask for a waiver in that. We did ask for public written comments to be in by 5:00 tonight. We didn't receive any written comments. So at this time, I know Megan's in person. I don't know if we have anybody in our public that wishes to speak at this time on, on the waiver that we're proposing?
No, we do not.
I think you'll see the majority of the school districts across the state asking for this waiver in the hours of instruction.
Okay, hearing, hearing that there is no one in person and the time for submitting written comments has passed, we'll consider this public hearing closed. So the next item, items on the agenda are board reports. The first would be from Mr. Radel, the Board Clerk for any correspondence.
Yes, there were two pieces of correspondence that I'd like to share with the board. The first was a thank you from the United Way of Jefferson and North Walworth Counties for a donation made by our own Dr. Olson, thanking her for her generous donation to the United Way. And the second was a thank you, a thank you note from the Dean Sanders family, his wife Lori, Cara and Brett, their children, or, or to the school district on behalf of, on behalf of, or in regard to the passing of Dean, one super fantastic superintendent we have here. It's a very, very thoughtful note.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Delaney, we have a first reading of a, of a policy to discuss.
Yep, the Policy Committee, which consists of Amy, Tanya and myself. We met on January 8th to review the December 2020 policy updates from Niola. And I will overview some of those policies now. And we will then vote on their approval in our February meeting. The first group of policies deals with the use of the district name, logo and mascot. Just making it clear that to, the need to obtain permission prior to the use. Policy 0131.1, pandemic related, acknowledges that state mandates, including temporary emergency orders, supersede our policies. We have several policies which focus on board member conduct, code of conduct, board information requests and board staff communication. We have several policies that clarify restrictions on the posting on social media of student pictures at public events. We have policy 2411 revised to inform parents each year of their students' academic and career planning services. Just a few more overviews here. There's a replacement library media center policy added to be consistent with DPI regulations. The policies related to grievance, those need to be reworked. And so we will be revisiting those at a later time. And lastly, several policy updates are already covered in our state, or I'm sorry, our staff and student handbooks and are just minor clarifications. So Tanya, I, if you have anything else you would like to add, I know I kind of just did a cursory overview, but you prevented, provided a nice document in the packet as well. It's very helpful.
I would concur with you. A lot of these revisions came because of issues related to the pandemic. So those were the majority of the revisions we saw.
Okay, so we will be doing the second reading of those which you have presented at our February meeting. Ms. Litcher. Resolutions from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards.
I will be the delegate for our board for, to the WAS conference on, virtual conference on the 20th of January. So in looking at that document, is there any way you would like me to vote on any of the issues, you as the board? All right.
Well, you could vote your conscience.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Whoop, I just lost the agenda, but that's okay. I'll get it back. We have the report from our student representative. Is Ms. Mendoza available?
I'm standing in for Bella today because she wasn't able to make it.
Welcome.
Yeah, I'm Shannon Waters, by the way. So many students are feeling the pressure as the quarter comes to an end this Friday, especially the students balancing athletics and clubs. Our athletes and spectators are truly thankful for the opportunities provided this year with the given circumstances and school pride is still shown daily. Our girls and boys basketball team is off to a fast start and both are contenders for conference champions. And Charlie Bender has recently hit 1,000 career points recently. So congratulations to him. And then our wrestling team is happy to be competing. And they recently received new mats and they're very happy about that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waters. The next item on the agenda will be administrative reports. The first is from Ms. Thompson. And we have a new course proposal.
Good evening. It's the time of the year that we look at new course proposals. And the process is that a department would come together if they are in need of a new course or have an idea for a new course, present that to their administrator within the building. And then it comes to our administrative team to review, to ask questions. And then finally, here to the school board for the final approval. So this year, we have one new course proposal. Our high school social studies department would like to propose that we add an honors course for modern United States history. And this course will be looking at the events from World War II until 2016. So a bit of a deeper dive for our students and giving variety of electives for our seniors within their 12th grade. You have the documents to support this proposal. Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to say, I was really impressed with how he wrote up this, the overview of the unit and the integration of reading, you know, language arts skills, really the use of primary and secondary documents. So I just thought it was written up very well.
Yeah, and I had conversations with Mr. Quinn in the curriculum that he developed and the outline for the units and just talking about the various ways that he can bring inquiry into his curriculum. And I think it's going to be a really great course for our students.
Hey, if there are no questions, we can then go to Dr. Olson's report.
Okay, I've got a lot of items tonight to report on. First of all, usually the one thing everybody waits for so they can plan their spring break vacations. The next year's school calendar, the 2122 calendar, I did work through, I've got a superintendent focused committee that I meet with monthly. And it's a committee that we just have kind of a free flow of ideas. And it's also a committee where I can bring things to, to vet through and get feedback. So that, that's actually cross-section staff. So it's teachers and support staff, food service, custodial, a nice, a nice group of us, of teachers and staff. So a couple of things we looked at this year, we had quite a few in-service days that were front ordered before school even start. So we went back to a little bit more of a traditional four in-service day start to the school year. We also talked about the opening in-service being not on that first day back. I, I still remember those days of being a teacher and that first day back that you just wanted to be in your classroom. You wanted to get things up and going. And the last place I wanted to be was in the auditorium, listening to the superintendent. I was like, a lot of stuff to do. So anyway, after talking with the, the staff, we are moving that opening in-service to the 26th. So it gives them a day to get in their classrooms. Then we'll do a nice welcome back and, and kick off the school year. It was also very valuable, valuable to see all of the different beginning of the year, things going on with the teachers and how we could kind of work that schedule wrong already. So we're already planning well in advance. Then we took the in-service days and we tried to have approximately one per month. I mean, obviously we got to juggle that with the hours of instruction and number of teacher contract days. But we really wanted to go into the school year with a plan for staff development and then be able to follow up every month with that plan of staff development. And we still will have a multi-district in-service in October. That's already planned since we had to cancel it this year. So it'll just be moved to next year. Thanksgiving break is pretty traditional. Christmas break is pretty traditional. We try not to move spring break around. So that's still that last week of March. And that means the last day of school then is June 8th, which is a half day. So we did move strategically one in-service day to the day before spring break. That allows parents a little flexibility to, you know, take off a little bit early with spring break plans. And then we did have quite a bit of conversation with staff about putting either an in-service day in December or January. We decided not to go with a December in-service date just because of all the music concerts that occur during that time and the need for all of those school days in September. Our school counselor has also advised us on just that need for social emotional support too, and not really wanting to have any days off in December in order just to provide some continuity, which can be a hard month for, for both students and staff. So that is the overview of, of the calendar and I appreciate everybody's help with that. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on the climate survey, the results of the next step. We talked early on that we were going to use the results of this survey, or at least part of it, to guide our strategic plan. I know one thing to remember as we read through the results is we did open up this survey from November 3rd through the 30th. So we're in the heart of the pandemic. Lots of emotions rising high. And so you'll see that feedback, I think, when we look in the district communication section of that. Very specific feedback regarding that area. So just a reminder that the survey was really to guide what we're doing well. Where do we need to improve? Where do we just need to adjust or focus more of our resources? And then what are the most significant planning priorities as we move forward? So just a quick overview, we had 70, 774 respondents. 147 of those were staff members. So staff members were allowed to take the survey, whether they lived in the district or not. We had a nice even spread as far as respondents of parents that had children in all three buildings. So it was in the 40%. So it wasn't skewed to just elementary or just high school or just middle school parents. So just a nice overview. And then with the relationships that they had with the Lake Mills Area School District too, it was just a nice diversity that we saw there, whether they were a parent or a graduate, whether they were parents that did not yet have kids in school, volunteers, grandparents or a community business partner. I'm going to just skip ahead and just note that this, the survey results are in the public section of the board docs there for anybody to access. So I mean skipping ahead to just tell us how the district is doing in the following areas. And so they were rated on a scale of one to four, one being poor, two fair, three good and four great. And you can really see, number one was like the pride that people have in the school district. I, I could see that loud and clear as a person new to the school district. There's just definitely, you know, pride in our teachers, pride in our athletics, pride in our facilities, pride in just overall like being a member of this community. As, as I looked through trends of the different questions, I, I did look at the bottom three categories on here. And not that I always go to the bottom, but it was, there were some trends that did kind of, it was a thread across the survey. One was meeting students' social and emotional needs. And that's, even though that wasn't a low area, it was definitely an area of growth. And it came out several times across the survey. Also the preparing students for life after school. We did see that in the comments that parents specifically noted that to make sure that the district doesn't just focus on the four-year college plan, that to make sure to focus on career readiness as much as college readiness. And that really making sure that students have life skills that are going to prepare them for a career after high school. And really looking also at that academic and career planning that, you know, ensuring that the vocational skills that students learn in high school are just as important as if students were on a four-year plan. And they also looked at developing students' unique potential. I looked at that too, as, as far as our career pathways that we have in the district and really making sure that students have opportunities throughout their school career to be able to try new things, develop talents that maybe they didn't realize that they had. And just, even if you just take students that maybe have an interest, you know, providing opportunities for an independent study or just nurturing those interests. So I did, I did see a lot about academic and career planning. Interestingly enough, I do have a meeting scheduled with Victoria Pratt from Thrive, which is the Economic Development Group here in Dodge and Jefferson County. So that is, that is something I'm already starting to work on in our community. We asked parents how valuable certain areas were to our students, whether it be core academics, programming for students with disabilities, vocational trades, athletics, the arts, language, English as a second language, things like that. And those all came back really fairly, fairly high. So there wasn't anything that we had on there that parents didn't feel was valuable. Then we asked, how are we doing in those areas? And it was interesting that school perceptions rated that. And then they also did a gap analysis for us between how, what parents think is important and then how we're also doing in those areas. And so we saw some needs that, that we thought were opportunities that just to continue with really focusing on programming for students with disabilities. We did see some comments come out too, as far as that, our English language learners programming. And then also looking at students, just even before they would be staffed with a disability is, what do our interventions look like and how are we supporting students? And then quite a few questions on the, the top end of that. Or what are we doing for our students that might be deemed gifted and talented? And are we really providing services to move those students forward as well? And one of the other gaps that we saw was the counseling services. And that, that, that was a low point in counseling services. But parents commented how they thought there was a need for more personnel in that area because we have our counselors working on social emotional health with students, but they're also responsible for academic and career planning. And they're two very big jobs. And, and those are two areas that, that parents just really felt strongly about and really thought that the district should emphasize. And then vocational trades came out again, really that career and technical ed portion of that teaching students real life skills that they would use in their everyday life. Interestingly enough as well, the other part that we looked at is how valuable are, and I hate using the word soft skills because it, that's just not a good term. But they're really kind of those 21st century skills, how important those are, are those. And parents rated those very high, all of them as very important. But then we looked at the gap analysis of like, how are we doing on those? And then that's another opportunity for growth. They, you know, still ratings came back really well. But just the mental health and wellness too, was another reoccurring theme in that area. And I would go back with really just work that we can continue to do with our business partnerships as far as what are those 21st century skills that you're looking for? How can we enhance those? Are there things we can do at the middle school, high school level, even elementary that would help with, you know, such things as teamwork, critical thinking, time management, creativity, imagination, things like that. And then we had parents pick up the four planning priorities. So the top four were ensuring that the academic needs of all students were being met. Once again, ensure social, emotional, mental health needs of students are being met. Help students with career planning, life after school. And then technology was the fourth highest ranked one. And then there's a whole section on here about communication. You know, how, how people, parents and non-parents access information. Where did, you know, where do they go to get their information? Is it social media? Is it the website, you know, email, text messages? And then how we are doing on that. And so I know one of the things I've talked with Megan about quite frequently is our need this summer, if not before, to really plan strategically for communication and actually just even to start with identifying like, why do you use certain things? Our school website has a specific purpose and, you know, why we would use that to communicate. Social media has a specific purpose. We talked this week about Peach Jar, like how we want to use that. You know, is that a communication tool or is it not, you know? So, you know, when do we text parents? When do we email parents? All of those things and really just defining that so that we're a little bit more predictable and that we also are communicating effectively. And not just to our parents, because that's the, the audience and our Skylar tip. But how can we branch out our communication to all of our constituents in the district? And just, you know, make them aware of all the great things that are happening in the district and continue to build that pride. And then finally, the last section of this survey was all about the individual schools. So parents rated different elements on the elementary, middle school and high school. Those ratings all came back very, very high, as well as the comment summary on our staff. I know our staff has been through a lot this year. And hopefully if we have staff watching this tonight, that they're reassured that really the comments that came back in this survey were very, very discrediting of our, our staff and even reiterating in some of the comments, our efforts to, to make sure that we maintain quality staff here in the district. And on a side note, I know you get to participate in some of the exit portfolios with the seniors. So Wendy and I got to do that. And you, after sitting through with these high school seniors, you understand fully how important the relationship is between students and the staff there. Every student I worked with talked about how meaningful teachers were and the relationship that they had one-on-one. And that's what helped get them through school. So. So that kind of is our stepping stone for the work that we will be doing. And just for those of you that weren't aware, that may be listening at home, we did move the strategic planning dates, thankfully, because we were going to start that in January and February. We moved that to April and May, hoping that there'd be a better opportunity for us to meet in person. It's a little bit of a stronger process when we can all be in the same room. So they're hopefully by us sometimes. So I will be sending these reports to Joe Schrader, who will be facilitating that plan and he'll be looking through those as well. So I don't know if there's any other comments or other input that anybody wants to provide. That was kind of my high level overview of the survey.
Did a good job of summarizing. It was heartening to see how many positives. I mean, it was, we're doing a lot of things very well. I guess one question I had is, do we have plans to reassess and repeat the survey? Maybe to kind of look for change in those opportunities for growth areas that maybe there's a little bit of room for, for some improvement?
I, I know one strategy I have used is, you know, if there's two or three particular areas that we're really focused on, that we have the opportunity to do our own, you know, like Google form, our own Google survey, just highlighting those areas and doing those as checkpoints, whether it's quarterly or if we do it twice a year, in order to see like, are we making improvements? Or just to get more specific feedback as we narrow that focus. So that's something that we can definitely do and, and maybe that's something we can do a check-in at the end of the third quarter and then again, at the end of the school year as we start to focus things in on our school improvement plans. We won't quite have our school improvement plan in place, I guess, by the end of the third quarter. But, but yeah, something definitely to keep in mind.
I thought that all of the, all the comments and the responses were very valuable and, and are going to be very helpful as we move forward. So, thought it was great.
I appreciate all the people that took the time to write comments because there was, there was a lot of comments. Okay, then the third item is, January is a time that school districts in Wisconsin are required to set the open enrollment seats. You see the grid prepared for you in board docs. And so you could see we're, we're, this is something that I would actually like to bring back for another discussion and not so much, we can't change the open enrollment seats, but just really looking at class sizes overall. And I know we kind of hover at the elementary between four sections and five sections. And that does, our class sizes fluctuate a little bit at the upper levels. At the lower levels, I think we're starting to see a little bit more of a, a steady trend. When I met with the teachers today in my superintendent focus committee, one of the things that came out was that we, we talked about like, what, what's something good that came out of COVID? And one of the, the things that the staff talked about at length was the fact that our class sizes are set at 18 due to our ability to physically distance. And they, and this was like at all levels, especially middle school and elementary. But they talked about the fact that with a class size of 18, they've, at the elementary, they've seen an 80% reduction in office referrals and behavioral referrals. They've been able to better meet the needs of their students and only because they're not dealing with discipline, you know, on a constant basis. And that's just something by nature. When you start getting up into class sizes of 24, 25, it becomes harder to manage. It becomes harder to provide individual attention to students. And so they really just said, boy, that's been a gift this year. They've gotten to know their students so well. They, they feel successful in that way of just being able to provide academically for their students this year. And just we're hoping that maybe that is, you know, as part of some of the boards planning as we look further ahead. I know we don't have class size limits per se. You know, sometimes boards will set that at, at a lower level, but just something to look at in the future. I know that has staffing implications, but as we looked at our, our survey and then we saw the need for the social emotional support. Be really interesting, but I, I've seen that myself in the correlation between. There's just this calmness in the schools. I mean, even at the middle school too, they just, they, they've just built a bond because they're in this cohort. They eat lunch together. They have great conversations. It's, it's been nice, it's been nice to see that. So. And so I don't know if there's any further questions with open enrollment that, that's pretty dry as far as the number of spaces. You can see with more spaces in the class sizes that have, you know, fewer students right now in person, but, but some of our class sizes and space, especially those lower grades, it's, it's getting tight already. I think I should give Dave a little bit of a hard time here. He is not running for school board. Again, next year, we're going to miss his leadership greatly. But I understand, I know Dave, I haven't seen you even at Rotary the last few weeks. So I know you gotta be busy at work. So we just really, we said, thank Dave for all the leadership he's provided and we at least have him through the April board meeting yet before we have the reorganization meeting in late April. But we do have three candidates that are running for school board. We have our own Andrew Palmer, who is running in that vacant seat. And so we do have two open seats and then we also have two others that have put their name into the school board for consideration when we were filling that vacant board seat. So Breanna Veslic and Ken Imers are also the other two running besides Andrew Palmer. So we wish them good luck and they're all strong candidates. And, and we're just, I think we're fortunate as a district to have candidates running for school board. That's, this year, this has been, it's probably been the toughest job that, in a long time. So. And lastly, Ben Dayton provided the rec department report. They are still going strong. I know they're working really hard. I, you know, when you look at the second page of, of his report and you talk about the number of participants at the elementary and through sixth grade that are participating in basketball, I think that's something that we can't take for granted. Or even the, actually the guitar and ukulele lessons. I had kids at the middle school that were just crushed if those ukulele questions, lessons got canceled. That was just a great program that Chris Shanifeld put out for us. But there's, you know, a lot of school districts that are not offering any other rec activities or any extracurriculars. I know my own grandkids are just dying to get back into some kind of rec programming, which is not offered in their community. So it's another bonus for being, for being a child in, in the Lake Mills School District. So kudos to the rec department.
Okay, the next agenda would be for community input. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. And let me tell you what's on the consent agenda, if I can find it. Go on, cooperate. There we go. Okay, we'll have, we have the December 14th meeting minutes, the December 14th Finance Committee proceedings, the January 8th Policy Committee proceedings, December's vouchers and invoices and treasures report. We have an administrative staff retirement, Ms. Brocker. We have a professional staff resignation. Mr. Pfeiffer, middle school Fayette teacher. Ms. Casey Buska, middle school, high school Spanish teacher. We have a professional staff contract for Ms. Vanessa Zim for the 18 and 21-year-old transition program. We have a professional staff intern contract for Ms. Kelly Schufreiter, special education teacher. We have a support staff resignation, Mr. Francesca, Ms. Francesca Lewick. And we have a support staff letter of assignment, Ms. Alexis Topol, special education para educator. Co-curricular letter of assignment, Ms. Melinda Oates, spring play advisor. We have the 2021 calendar. We have the 2021-22 High School Course Description Book. We have the 2021-22 Open Enrollment Spaces and the amended 2021 Summer School Dates. So I would entertain a motion to approve that agenda.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion or questions? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
John Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litter?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
Moving on to the action items, the first item is the approval of the employee COVID language. And this was discussed in the Finance Committee relating to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and associated leave opportunities. So I would entertain a motion to approve that language as presented.
I move the board approve, I move the board approve the employee COVID-19 language as presented.
I'll second it. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion to approve?
Amy Litter?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is the approval requesting a Department of Public Instruction waiver for hours of instruction. This was the subject of the public hearing that we had earlier. So I would ask for a motion for its approval.
I move the board authorize the administration to request that DPI waive the minimum number of hours of instruction set forth in the Wisconsin Statute 121.02, parent one, parent F, and 121.006, parent two, parent A for the Lake Mills Area School District 2020, 21 school year through the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Again, hearing, hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote on the approval.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litter?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is approval of HVAC control software bid. This item again was discussed during the Finance Committee meeting. This is a part of a total replacement of a, of a unit at the high school. And so I entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board to approve the bid from automated logic for HVAC control software at the high school at a cost not to exceed $18,150.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments or questions? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
David Rado?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litter?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Excuse me.
The next item is the replacement for the equipment itself. This again was reviewed earlier this evening during the Finance Committee meeting. And so I would entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the bid from Technique Mechanical for HVAC replacement at the high school in the amount of $49,600.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? May we please have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
John Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litter?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is to amend the 2021, correct? Not 2020, 2021, 2020. So it's the 2020-21 Contract with Fort Healthcare for School Nurse Services. This again was discussed during the Finance Committee meeting. The current pandemic is requiring additional hours and this will, this will accommodate that. So I would entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board to approve an additional 200 school nurse hours for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. To amend the contract with Fort Healthcare for nursing services. Questions or comments? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Amy Litter?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is the approval of the Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolutions. As Ms. Litter noted during her report, she will be in attendance virtually at the convention and will be, we need a motion to give her the latitude to act on the resolutions.
I move the board give Ms. Litter the latitude to vote on the WASB resolutions at the 2021 WASB Convention in the best interest of Lake Mills Area School District.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litter?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of gifts. And again, we find that our community is most generous in supporting, supporting the, the students in the district. So I would ask for a motion accepting those gifts.
I move the board of, sorry, I move the board accept the following gifts and thank generous donors for the continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. The Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories $100 donation to the High School Math and Science Department. Michael and Andrea Sheinberger's donation of $200 for past due student lunch accounts. And ExxonMobil's $500 donate, $500 donation to the High School Math and Science Department.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, we're very thankful for the support that we receive. And I'd ask for a roll call vote on the motion, please.
David Rado?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litter?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries.
The next item is to talk about any future agenda items for our upcoming meeting.
Well, the second reading of the policies at the next board meeting. And I'll also provide an enrollment update now that we are nearing here the second Friday in January. We're also at the semester and we are starting to see an influx of students switch from virtual instruction to in-person. So I will, I will also update you sooner than the last meeting on that. But I want to provide an update of what our numbers are looking like here for the remainder of the year. Possible consideration of the RFQs for architectural services. And then we'll start putting together a staffing plan just between some of the retirements that we've seen coming in. We'll, we'll start putting together a staffing plan and some associated budget numbers to go along with that, just to get a head start on, on planning for the early spring and the hiring process.
Okay. The next item would be to approve a motion to adjourn to executive session. And I understand that will be, that will be back in the Google meets format. So may we please have that motion?
I move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, administrative contracts, and district administrator evaluation.
Second.
May we please have a vote on the motion?
John Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
So we will reconvene with the assumption that the technology cooperates. So thank you very much. Good evening.